And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take the roll, another.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
Interim city manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items. Is there anyone who would like to comment on agenda-related items tonight?
I have a comment, but it's not.
Please state your name and address.
My name's Dennis Scaram. I don't live in Manistee in the city, but I live on Maple Road. My comments are with regard to the building, or the, I guess we'd call them, the building inspector.
Okay, so, yeah, this is for agenda-related items. If you, there'll be an opportunity for you to speak at the end, sir.
At the end?
Yes, at the end, yep. There'll be an opportunity.
I didn't see that in the minutes, thank you.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of the council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Tonight consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balance, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next work session, consideration of Salt City Rock'em Blues Incorporated to hold a Labor Fest event scheduled for Saturday, September 4th, from 8:00 a.m. through 12:00 a.m., Sunday, September 5th, consideration of a temporary activity permit for Benzey County Conservation District Gold Wash Station. Is there a motion? I make a motion, Grabowski.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski. Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, consideration of a transfer of an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for Fracano's Manistee River LLC located at 440 River Street. A request has been received from Ted Fracano to transfer the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate from 440 River Street from Chemical Bank to Manistee River LLC. City Council acted October 27, 2020 to establish the 440 River Street obsolete property rehabilitation district and approve the obsolete property rehabilitation exempting certificate for Fracano's Manistee River LLC finalized the purchase of the property from TCF Bank on February 28, 2021. Public Act 146 of 2000, the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act provides for the transfer of the certificate by the legislative body for, of a qualifying local government unit. The act does not require action by the commission following the transfer by the qualified local government unit. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution approving the transfer of an obsolete property certificate to Fracano's Manistee River LLC. Is there a motion?
I'll make a.
Make a motion, Grabowski.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the sale of a city Marina property to Fracano's Manistee River LLC. Fracano's Manistee River LLC owner of the 440 River Street would like to purchase a portion of city Marina property that is benefit, that is beneath the dock, that is attached to the north side of the building and some property that is the west of the building. They have agreed to pay $30,000. The Marina property was developed with the assistance of a grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Waterway Commission. And so the city is required to get their consent and approval for the sale. Additionally, additional, the Waterways Commission requires that the proceeds of the property sale must go into a restricted Marina fund to be used for future Marina improvements. At this time, council could take action to approve the sale of a Marina property to Fracano's Manistee River LLC for $30,000, contingent on the consent of the, and approval of the Waterways Commission, put the proceeds of the property sale into a restricted Marina fund to be used for future Marina improvements, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute all sale and closing documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any discussion, questions?
I have several questions. Number one, uh... First of all, anytime there's a property split, it really should go before the planning commission first before it comes to us. That's just been the protocol for a long time. So, I'm a little bit surprised that we have it tonight. However, that's my first comment. My second comment is, I'm not completely satisfied with the $30,000 price. And my third comment is that I want to make sure in the purchase agreement that it's totally understood that any docks that are in front of Fracano's still belong to the Marina, and I just wish there was a little bit more wording within, inside the purchase agreement on that. And lastly, I guess I do have one more comment. Normally, whenever, in the real estate world, I'm used to seeing all pages of the survey, and there was only one page included. So it's missing the page with the legal description. So I'm not prepared to say yes on this tonight.
Any other discussion?
I've got a couple of questions. Was there any plans to use the property that we're now looking at going to this purchase? Was there anything in a master plan, especially the property that would be adjacent to it, not, not in front, between the building and the river, but on the side going towards the Marina, the west side?
So I'll, I'll have DPW Director McCool answer that last question. I can try to answer some of the first ones that were posed.
So we worked with Mr. Fracano to see what his needs were, and it really doesn't, the, the property transfer doesn't extend very much further north than the previously leased property, which contains the deck. Going out to the west side, it was discussed between the parties that, that may provide enough area to allow for additional deck space for the restaurant, but also possibly a new access down to the Riverwalk. Currently, the Marina doesn't have any plans for that property, and we made sure that the existing utilities and access to them were maintained with that, the parcel that's laid out.
And then the other question I had was, can the proceeds from this sale be used towards the dock renovations that we were also looking at?
I, I think they could be. However, we already bonded for, for that, those, that project, and it'd be my recommendation, we just set it aside for other future capital needs. For instance, we're going to need to replace those gas tanks at some point. I know the camera system at the Marina is worn out. They've had a patio project, things like that, that it might be useful for too, but it certainly could go towards the docks.
Anything to, that, from, to beautify the Riverwalk as well, anything to beautify that area, would that be valid?
I mean, I think as long as it's in the Marina property, there, it could be used for capital projects there and maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Is that in the agreement, Jeff, that going west with the property?
Yeah, it's. It's included in the agreement.
Anybody else?
Who came up with the $30,000?
So I believe that Molly was consulted, the city assessor, as to what the value of that property would be, and that was the number that she came up with.
Anybody else? Hearing done, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
No.
Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Grabowski.
No, I didn't think so.
I'm sorry?
It was a no.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved.
Thank you. Considering, consideration of entering into a development agreement with Little River Holdings LLC and the City of Manistee Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. The city and Little River Holdings LLC has been working on securing an Eagle grant and loan for demolition and environmental remediation of the Gateway Project. Eagle has indicated that the city and project qualify for a Brownfield redevelopment grant of $700,000 and a loan of $800,000. As part of the application process for these funds, Eagle requires the development agreement outlining the responsibilities of the parties. At this time, council could take action to enter into a development agreement with Little River Holdings LLC, the City of Manistee Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. It's your second.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
It just, I, I confirmed through the paperwork, but we're holding a, basically, a co-signatory on the loan, is how I read that. And Little River Holding is responsible for the note. Should they fail, the city's on the, basically on the hook for the note, correct, Ed?
That's correct. We have to pledge our revenue sharing if for some reason their, the payments don't get made. But the development agreement provides protection for the city and security for, to make sure that that loan is repaid. And it also anticipates at a future date, a brownfield plan coming forth, which would have a tax increment financing plan, which would pay back the loan payments.
And can I assume that you've done your due diligence in, in their finances, that you're comfortable that they have the ability to repay that loan and will repay that home?
Yes, we, we have that comfort level, and also we have a mortgage that would be on the property in case there was a default and they didn't pay. So we have plenty of security in the agreement.
The mortgage is on which, is it a specific piece of property or all that property?
It's all of the property.
All the property, okay.
There's seven pieces, right?
Seven parcels, correct.
I have a question. I mean, this is all within the DDA district, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Okay, but the city itself is making the agreement and taking on the loan.
Correct.
So, if it, if we're taking that on, I mean, that indicates ownership to me, that we own all of that. Does that mean we have to reduce the size of the DDA district? I'm confused, because it's within the DDA district.
It, it doesn't require reducing the size of the DDA district. I mean, those parcels will remain in there. The, the taxes eventually, presuming that the city council approves a future brownfield plan, will be captured for a number of years to help support the development and public infrastructure, just like we've done on many of our brownfield plans. But that's a few steps down the road still. The reason for bringing this into council right now is Little River Holdings would very much like to get that site more ready for developers and clean up some of the contamination. So this opportunity came about because there was funds that Eagle had in a couple of their programs, and they're very excited about this project. So this will allow those buildings to be taken down, some of the contamination to be addressed. And then as Little River works through the plan for that corner, it'll be ready once, once they get a developer on board.
I guess I'm still a bit confused about the tax portion, because the DDA properties, they, anything that was above a certain, I can't remember what year it was, you probably remember what year it was.
The late eighties, the base value.
Late eighties, they established the base. So that appreciation on the properties going forward, does that come to the city or go back to the DDA?
So the, the base value on those properties is established, and if they're all additive as to what the tax increment's going to be. So when those properties get demoed, that value will go down until there's new construction built on that. So the DDA will be losing some revenue potentially, depending on how long it takes for those properties to get built back up. But I'm anticipating that the DDA, once the brownfield plan comes through, is going to be giving up all of their capture to the Brownfield Authority to be able to repay eligible costs.
Okay, is it going to, I guess I'm, I'm worried a little bit that it's going to impact their future budgets that they have for the DDA, so that's why I'm asking.
It might have a, a minor impact on their future budgets, but the, the payback with all of the positive benefits economically that'll come from that development down the road, I think will, will overshadow that.
We've all sat here and wondered what's happening with Gateway, so personally, I'm happy to see something happening with Gateway that's got dollars and cents and shovels and some work. So personally, I'm, I'm happy to see this move forward.
And if, if any member of council has questions about some of the environmental aspects, I do have Susan. Ishbeck, who is our consultant for the Brownfield Authority, Roman Wilson, who normally would be here, is getting ready to go on vacation, but she came down. So if you have specific questions about contamination or things like that, she's here, as well as Tom St. Dennis from Little River Holdings.
I wouldn't mind if, maybe the five-minute version, I went through that material, I, I'll be honest, I understood very little of it. So if you can kind of give us a, maybe just a general outline of what the, the key contamination issue is and how that will be remedied?
Sure, and it's going to maybe show that I did not do all my homework today on this, but there are two different kinds of contamination downtown, and the way that Eagle has set up the grant and loan, some of the money is coming to deal with petroleum contamination, because there is a special fund for petroleum contamination that comes out of the gas taxes. There is a different fund that is for non-petroleum contamination, and that is from general funds, I think now, is what they're, or no bottle returns, or some, you know, something that is sort of a little trickle. So as Ed mentioned, it is pretty significant how much money they are committing to this project, a million and a half dollar grant and loan. Does not come along all the time. Anyway, and back to your question, council member. So some of this contamination comes from the old gas station, the car repair, those are, you know, on the petroleum side. And then the other contaminants along the river, gosh, I'm trying to think, Ed, was it fill?
Now, there's some of that, and there's also some chemicals from the dry cleaners.
Yes, that's right, thank you, from the American cleaners. So a significant amount of the Part 201 contamination, which is the non-petroleum, comes from American cleaners. Anything on the water, any place in the state typically has been filled to stabilize, so you can build, of course, on the banks. And so a lot of fill that was brought in, and this is pretty common, every place may have contamination in it, so metals are pretty typical. You get a lot of fill materials in the, back in the day from foundries. So you get a lot of foundry sand, metals, junk like that. We have not done a ton of investigation out there yet. We know when the tribe purchased the property, they had to do due diligence, their environmental due diligence, and so they did a series of environmental studies before they purchased the property. And typically, those are done as a kind of a, it's like when you get an inspection done on a house, when you're buying a new house. They do about enough to know what they're getting themselves into. And so the, the environmental investigations, especially with the hope that they would be getting some support from the state and from the city on this in the form of the tax increment revenues. Typically, those investigations are pretty basic. So one of the things that we'll be doing, once we get the grant and loan, is some more investigation to see how big this problem really is, how widespread it is, and what level of contaminants, how dangerous are we talking? So we don't know a ton yet about the environmental conditions, but we know enough to know that these, all are going to need some kind of cleanup.
Is there an estimated timeline based on approvals?
Eagle, who's awarding the grant and loan, will get our final grant application, assuming that you approve the resolution tonight, which is the next item on your agenda. That's one of the things that they require, that you enter into this loan with your eyes wide open. So after I get that from Heather tomorrow, before she goes on vacation, then our grant application will go in tomorrow. And they're on a pretty fast track because of fiscal year end, at the end of September, so they want to get all of this done, contracts signed, and get everything all in order before the end of September. So I would anticipate grant approval, gosh, a month to six weeks.
Okay.
And then they will sign, send a contract to Ed, who has the signing authority, once the city manager is gone, and Ed signs the contract, and then we can start rolling.
Great.
Do you have any other questions?
I don't.
Any other questions?
I, I just want to know how quickly new development will happen on that site.
That I'll refer to Tom.
That would be great, thanks.
That's a tough question.
Well, it's a big number we're looking at.
It really is, and, and, you know, alls I can say upfront is, we've been on this for a couple of years. City staff has bent over backwards to help us understand what we have and kind of grind through the details. We punched a bunch of holes in the ground to make sure we are comfortable with what we have, so we think we are. Susan scared me a little bit there, but I, I think we know what we have. We've got a final meeting. We, we had some partners that didn't seem like a long-term fit, and as you know, I represent the tribe, and this is a, a long-term commitment, so. We've got another group that we're bringing in that are highly experienced. Should have final meetings on Friday to try to wrap it up, and then we go to contracts. Our intent is to have partners in place here within the next two months, depending how long it takes to get the contracts going through. And then our, my position at Little River Holdings is that we will, MEDC is so strongly behind this project that they've already advanced us some funds, so we will look at what we've got, look at our estimates, and then make a decision if we're going to start in September or even before this is finalized, using some of our own funds. We've already got a significant amount of money into this, we're not going away. And when you'll see a new building, you know, that's always the question, or which, how many new buildings that is something we're going to figure out over the next, I'd say, two to four months, you know, really look at it. We've got a, I developed a 300-lot subdivision just south here, and I've watched my material prices escalate almost 300%. So we've watched the ability to deliver what we wanted to deliver, it very difficult. We're also involved with the Hollander project, and you know, we had a very significant cost overrun there, we've been back away. We're continuing forward. If you guys have gone by and seen it, it's, it's looking pretty strong. So we, we think that our timing with the material prices maybe trickling back down a little bit, starting to get plans, can make a better pitch to the banks and everything else. There's a lot of players involved, it's a big number, so. I'm hoping that we actually see things coming out of the ground, other than contaminants, mid to late next year would be my, my hope. I don't know if we can go any earlier, but if the economy helps us and we continue to get the nice backup in prices, it, it gets affordable now, because it just became ridiculous. I mean, we really, like I say, 300% increases in, in materials to build stuff is just untenable.
In order to move forward, this process has to be completed, is that not true?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, this is, this is.
If this, if this does not get approved, it, it doesn't move forward.
Well, and if you don't get that, you, you seem a little, you seem confident tonight, that you'll get this third partner.
Oh, yeah.
Involved, so, but worst-case scenario, if you don't, do you have any other prospects?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, we have several people. As a matter of fact, Manistee is that, and you're all aware, that we're that one area here that is, developers are looking at it saying, wow, you know, this place is ready. So, yeah, we've got other folks.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's very exciting, and I, I say that with, I'm very conservative, but I say that conservatively because we have been digging around here now for several, several years, so we're comfortable with what we got.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
I have one request. Could you do something about the window dressings? In other words, we've got a lot of just open windows, kind of looking into neglected buildings. I, I thought it would be, you know, even just concept drawings, or even just the new Manistee Spirit of the Woods logos. But, you know, again, it's, our, our gateway, and, and for the next year or two, it'd be nice to see, you know, some kind of window treatments.
So, um, we, when the architect, he's drawing pictures right now, so we had some really cool stuff drawn, but we're, we're going back at it again. We thought about using that on the windows, and then I thought, God, I'm tearing this down this fall. We did contact a firm, Mark was very kind, who hooked me up with a firm out of Grand Rapids that does this and puts the fences up, and we can put the logos on it and, and some pretty pictures. So after my meeting on Friday, we'll, we'll kind of chew on that as a group and see. We talked about, so there's a couple of options. We can put things in windows, and I've kind of, you know, like they had across the street there, I don't know if I like that all the time. What we were talking about with the people in Grand Rapids is taking fencing, you know, putting it down, and then putting something solid on it, so it surrounds a place instead of someone just papered something up in a window, is, is what I was looking at. It's a little more expensive, but I thought it's more first-class. And along with your alliance, it's a gateway. I mean, it's the entrance to the city, so we take it pretty serious. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Hearing done, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution accepting a $700,000 grant and an $800,000 loan from Eagle for brownfield redevelopment and authorizing the interim city manager and CFO to execute any needed documents, including the application. The city and Little River Holdings LLC has been working on securing an Eagle grant and loan for demolition and environmental remediation for the Gateway Project. Eagle has indicated that the city and project qualify for a brownfield redevelopment grant of $700,000 and loan of $800,000. As part of the application process for these funds, Eagle requires a resolution and application. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution accepting a $700,000 grant and $800,000 loan from Eagle for brownfield redevelopment and further authorize the interim city manager and CFO to execute any needed documents, including the application. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Have motion and support, any further discussion?
I got, I got one simple question. Ed Bradford, the interim city manager and CFO, do you sign it twice or something else signing as, how, how are you doing that?
Just one, signature's all that's required.
Okay.
Anything else? Hearing done, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a purchase of a 2021 Dodge Durango SXT, a all-wheel drive. The Manistee City Police Department utilizes an armored police vehicle as part of the police fleet. The vehicle is assigned to the detective sergeant currently. That the vehicle is a 2010 Ford Escape, and is at its end of its life cycle. Bits have been solicited from Michigan Deals participating, participants, as well as other dealerships and upfitting companies. One Dodge dealer and one upfitting company has been identified based on pricing and equipment needs. At this time, council could take action to authorize the purchase of a 2021 Dodge Durango SXT, all-wheel drive, from Watson Manistee Chrysler for $27,608, and upfitting by Tell-Rat Incorporated for $1,154. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
You know, isn't, isn't that price significantly less than MSRP?
It is. We were pretty fortunate that Watson's Manistee was able to, to match the government pricing. So, and, and full transparency, the, the car market is such that we might call them tomorrow, and this vehicle is no longer available, so I might be in front of you in two weeks with another request, so we were happy to get this price.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Hearing done, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of accepting a waterways grant agreement for the Manistee Marina replacement Phase II project. The city has successfully applied for a $203,000 Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant to assist in replacing the remaining five docks in the city Marina. Funding for the, for the city $213,700 match were included in the capital improvement bond process and are available. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution and accept the waterways grant agreement authorizing the mayor. grant agreement authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
There's support?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, so that I understand, so I don't have to look it up again. Does that mean that to replace the docks, it's really a $400,000 fix, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one question, is it going to be the same company that has did the other docks that we just had replaced, or is it has to go out for a new bid, and we don't know who that is yet?
We used the, the insurance proceeds to design the entire marina replacement, but we only had funds to replace the docks that were replaced. So, we have sought, sought out alternate financing for these last five docks. So, they'll be the exact same materials, the same design. We actually included them, the Phase II, in our permitting, so we have Eagle and Corv engineer permits, but we will be competitively bidding out this project.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of budget amendment 21-4 for fiscal year and June 30th, 2021. The city of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendments address expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with state statutes regarding appropriations, and Mr. Bradford, you know I'm going to call on you to give an overall briefing.
So, the only item that was included in this council budget amendment is the $100,000 that we discussed during the budgeting process, a transfer from the general fund to the motor pool to stabilize it. This would be the first of three years that we'd be doing this, so we needed to do a budget amendment to be able to make sure that we covered that appropriation.
Any questions for Mr. Bradford? At this time, council could take action to adopt budget amendment 21-4 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have motion and support, any further discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Poniek.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Are you okay?
Don't lean too far back.
[laughing]
Note to self.
Um, Councilmember Sullivan.
Let's take a five-minute break, Mr. Cut, Bachman, and Cooper.
I'll say yes, in case you didn't hear over there.
Okay, I thought it was.
I don't know what you mean.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, and Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank goodness we have the safety.
You do.
Yeah.
Consideration for applications of boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies in the compensation commission, historic district commission, PAC commission, and the tree commission. Mayor, Mayor Oil and Manager appointments require a motion second and council voter's support. Nominees for council appointments do not require second. After all nominations are made, council votes on a nominee until one nominee receives majority support. Tonight, we have the historical district commission, there are two vacancies. One member is desired to, who meets professional qualification standards for archeologic, architect, architectural historian, historian, or historic architect. This is a council appointment, is there a nominee?
I'll nominate Thad Taylor, 581 East Street.
To what term, ending?
To the term ending 2/28/24.
There are no other nominees, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniek.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Notice as a communication announcement, I received word that we're not going to be having a, the airport update tonight. Mr. Lynn was unable to make it. Moreover, to citizens' concerns and comments, citizens' comments, this is a community for citizens' comments on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement, citizens and attendants shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be read. Is there anyone who would like to make comments, limited to five minutes? Please state your name and address.
My name is Dennis Skara, and I live at 1453 Maple Road. My, I have actually three items, I realize I'm limited to five minutes, so the first is, I would like to know why the council and the city is still employing Steve Hogan as the building inspector and rental inspector. All of you got a packet, as I did, from the Lelandon Enterprise, which states on 3/13/18, Mr. Hogan was arrested on charges of criminal sexual conduct, assault with intent to commit sexual penetration, which was a 10-year felony. He also was charged with domestic violence. He did go to trial, and according to the Traverse City Record Eagle, published the testimony of his then-wife, they were still married at the time, but anyways, she indicated that he not only bit her, but caused other bruising and so forth. She did go to the hospital and was tested, but conveniently, the photos of that attack were never downloaded and thus never presented at trial, as was the DNA never sent for analysis because the sheriff said, or deputy sheriff said, and I quote, "Swabs were never sent to the lab for DNA analysis because Kazabowski," who was the deputy sheriff, "said that he knew who the suspect was." So, Mike, and of course, he was acquitted, or hung jury on a 10 to 2 verdict, simply because of the sloppy and preferential treatment of, of that evidence, at least in my estimation, and this comes from the Traverse City Record Eagle. So, I would like to know why the, the city and the council is allowing that person to slither around in our community, doing rental inspections and doing permit inspections. Does anybody have an answer?
This is not an opportunity for city council to answer, this is an opportunity for you to express your concerns and comments, sir.
You've had this information for almost three months, sir.
I'm telling you that this is a time for you to express your concerns and comment.
Well, I didn't think I would get an answer tonight. The other thing, as long as we're talking about SafeBill, that, that has turned into a cash cow for not only the city, but for SafeBill. I have talked to several people, naturally, I've been around 50 years, so people call me, but I, I am one of the proud owners of some of this, what I call permit, well, let's just say they're gouging us. I had eight split-unit air conditioners put in at Arrowhead Apartments, $180 apiece. So, eight, it's one building, eight units, and I got $1,440. That was more than, than two of the air conditioners that were put in. So, and then we had another four units put in at Colonial, same thing, $180 apiece times four. Had I known that these ridiculous fees were going to be charged, I wouldn't have done it. In fact, we are considering right now selling all of our apartment buildings, because I can't put up with this. The, one of the council people here, I believe, issued a statement saying that permits should not be a, a method or a means to, for the city to enhance their riches, and to me, that's exactly what's happening. I was at a work session at the Ramsdale Theater, what, a month ago, and Steve made the comment that in his estimation, a normal repair is changing a light bulb. Well, a five-year-old can change a light bulb. He's gotten to the point where he's driving around, looking for toilets and other things on the side of the road, and then stopping in and forcing these people to get permits. I have had numerous, numerous calls from different individuals, saying that he just walks in the building, unannounced.
I have 30 seconds.
Pardon me?
There's 30 seconds, please.
Well, anyways, then the, the final thing is the blight. I think with regard to the rental inspections, I know you guys want to turn that into another cash cow, but in, on June 9th of 2016, I dropped one of these packets of pictures off to the mayor, it wasn't you, and again, on 3/21/18, I, I, we went through this. So, I, I think trying to place all the blame for the city's woes on, on the, on landlords is really a disservice to us, and you've got a bigger problem with blight, including that mess you have up at Peanut Butter Hill. The city is not exempt from being one of the major players in the, in the downslide of Manistee, so that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
And by the way, the final, one, one final thing, I would like to know when that contract was signed with SafeBill, how much money's been collected so far, and how much is the city's take? I believe that's 20 percent. Any comment?
This is, again, this is not a time for us to make comments. Mr. Bradford, will you deal with that?
Could somebody answer those questions for me?
Mr. Bradford will deal with you, he'll, he'll be answering your questions. Not tonight, he'll send you some notice.
Since April.
Okay, thank you. Officials and staff, Mr. Bradford, do you have anything?
No, I just want to say, the DBW and Public Safety did a great job over the 4th of July weekend, and there really was fairly uneventful with a lot of people in town, so hats off to them, good job, gentlemen.
Mr. Saylor.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City clerk.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City engineer.
Nothing, Your Honor. So, one thing.
Too late.
It's either him or me.
Okay, good, yeah.
Just real quick, we, we heard from the contractor on the 8th Street project, and they've, are going to start work, they want to start at the end of this week, and we asked to get to next Monday, so we could notify property owners. But 8th Street's going to be starting up, starting on Monday, and we're working on getting some notices out and letters out to the, the property owners. The problem's been materials, I think you've heard that all the last couple of months, and now they have an opportunity, they have some people that are sitting around doing nothing, and they want to jump on the project. So, we're going to kind of scramble and let everybody know, I know it's short notice, that's why we wanted to say something tonight, so that's why I'm passing it along.
What's the timeline? How long will that, that strip be closed to traffic?
Did, I don't know, we received a schedule, probably, we're going to be, we're going to be milling off the material, and then they have to put in storm sewer, and I don't know if those materials are handy or not, so it's supposed to be open to traffic to all residents, so unless they're working directly in front of them, you know, the, they should have access to get to the road and get in and out from their homes.
But we're going to stop cross-traffic, right? You're not going to-
Yeah, it's just local, local.
Okay, right now, that's a pretty thoroughfare, that's why I'm wondering.
Right.
Because you'll be diverting them up probably 7th Street or-
Right, 12th possibly? I think we got 12th Street as a detour, actually, so.
So, you, right now, we don't know how many months it's going to be?
We'll, we'll get the schedule.
I think that's going to be about 60 days.
Okay.
Any other questions on that item?
Don't see any. Now, DPW, do you have anything else?
I told you it was a choice, you made the right one. I have nothing.
City police?
I don't think, thank you.
Fire chief?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
I think we've done everybody. Mr. Bachman?
I, I spoke to Thad about Steve in the reports we got in the mail, and I was not happy to see what we saw, and I thought it would be appropriate to do a background check and investigate that stuff and pull the police report. He disagreed with me. He's gone, you're there, I would make the suggestion again. I think we need to look into his background, we need to do a background check on him, we need to decide if he's an appropriate employee to represent the city of Manistee, going in people's houses and doing inspections. I think we need to keep an open mind on it and be objective, but we need to look at the facts, and let the facts lead us where they got to go, and that's all I have.
And Beaton?
I just have one comment. First of all, I thought the Forest Festival Light was, was very well attended, and it, and it was a lot of fun, so I tried to participate in everything. I just wanted to make one comment that I got from a few people that were coming from the parking lot, and then trying to cross over to the vendors that were on the north side of the street. There's no easy way to, to traverse that hill, so they were wondering if something could be done, maybe in the future, if we're going to keep those particular vendors in the same spot, if we could put a ramp there or something for people to make it a little bit easier to cross. So, it just, it was pretty awkward for a few people, so, other than that, it was a great, great.
Are we talking about on 1st Street?
Yes.
Okay, going from the large parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
We've had those thoughts and discussions, and we'll address that.
Thank you very much. And that was it, it was a great time.
Mr. Saylor?
I actually have quite a few things.
Uh-oh.
I'm sorry. Okay, so first of all, I want to know if we have figured out the ARP funds, what they can be used for yet?
So, we have gotten a little bit more guidance, and there's an application process through the state, but the final guidance has not yet been released, so we've been, we're keeping really close tabs on it, and once we have some information where we can have an intelligent discussion with council, we'll schedule a work session for that.
And then, the second thing is the sign ordinance, if we can have zoning start working on the sign, the sign ordinance. The committees about choosing who's on a committee, the way that we're doing it. SafeBill, I've said it for months, this guy is a problem. He said in the meeting a month or so ago, that it would be one permit for the whole building, and to charge $180 a unit is ridiculous. He can't do the job, and I think that every time we bring it up, he'd get a different answer that satisfies most of us for a short period of time, and then it just falls back to not getting it done, and I think that he's fixated on permits, and I think that that's a problem, so.
So, I did talk to him briefly before Thad left, and asked him to start generating a weekly report on how many rental inspections and how many building inspections and permits he's issued, so I'm, I don't know if we've gotten the first one.
I don't know how we're going to figure out how that's accurate, since, you know, the last work session, he said that he didn't do 36 inspections, he did way more, but when I went back and read it, three dozen is 36, and then three weeks later, he was at 65, so I, I am not confident in anything the guy says right off the bat.
So, I think this will be a, a good starting point to be able to kind of track and, and help to hold him more accountable, and we do get records of the payments that come in, but those two aren't directly correlated, so I think this is a starting point on that, so we can-
We're already going to be in August, like, how long are we going to keep letting this go until we're as far back behind as we've already been? Like, it's not getting better, so we're just going to keep beating a dead horse.
Councilmember Sullivan, I don't think we're letting it go, and we're not ignoring it, that's why I asked him to produce this information, so we can look at it and evaluate whether we think we're going. He did say they sent letters out, and that's generated quite a few more responses, but we'll quantify that and we'll look at it, we know roughly how many rental units they are, and we'll see where they're at and hold their feet to the fire, and if it's not being satisfactory, then we'll have to come up with some contingencies.
Is there a timeframe for that? I mean-
Well, I, I only asked him a couple of weeks ago to start getting the report, so I have to see the first one.
Six months, like, why have you not gotten this done?
Correct, and, and administration hasn't asked him to produce those metrics so that it can be evaluated, so that, that, you know, one of my, one of my concern, one of the things that I've heard loud and clear from council is that they want that addressed, so we're going to be looking at that to try to make sure that they are performing, to be able to get through those inspections that need to be done.
My concern is we just keep getting excuse after excuse, and nothing's getting done, but charging ridiculous amounts for permits. My next thing is the recycling, like, I know that it's a problem, but I don't understand why it's so difficult to figure out how to fix it.
I'm going to defer to Jeff McCool on that, I mean, part of the issue is with PCA, I know that they've had, had an issue over the holiday and stuff, but, I mean, Jeff can talk to that a little bit more intelligently.
I believe the News Advocate is going to do a big article on this, we had, I had, we had extensive, extensive discussions with them. The recycling is actually a fairly complicated issue, because it's a commodity, and, you know- know, the city had two forms of recycling, one was a co-mingled, so we had plastic glass and metals, and then we had a separate, uh, fiber or cardboard. The fiber and cardboard up until, uh, two thousand eighteen, the value of that material as a commodity was so, was so high that it exceeded Republic's cost for them to rent us dumpsters, pick it up, dump it, and then sell it. So we paid zero for it. We got it for free for a very long time. Then the commodity dropped on that, the value of that dropped, and so then Republic came back to us and said, now it's costing us a lot more to, to process it than what we can sell it for, so it, it created a twelve thousand dollar increase to the city, just on an annual basis, that was a brand-new, brand-new increase to us. Those funds are then distributed, um, across all of the, the refuse users in the community, and so when we, uh, set the rates for, or recommend the rates for the upcoming year, it has to take into those, those prices. Um, about at the same time, and this, a lot of this was caused by China. China was the number-one importer of recycled products in the entire world, and what China was dealing with is, they were buying so much so fast that there was a lot of contamination or materials that couldn't be recycled in that material, and so as that material's coming in, um, every day, they were then having to find places to take all that contaminated material and then landfill it. So their government ceased all recycled material imports for several months, just stopped buying it. So it backed it up across the world, and that's when the values of these materials dropped. Then they, um, then they enacted new laws that required the contamination level to be down to a very low, so maybe they were experiencing ten percent of contamination, and they set the limit at two percent. So now the processors, at least in the United States, have to pay more people to do more sorting, to make the materials cleaner, to have value to, to sell it anywhere. And what, what we found is that the glass had absolutely no value, and it was the heaviest material, so it was the most expensive to transport. So if you remember, about the same time that, that the, uh, we had to start paying for the recycling of the cardboard, we had to take the glass out of our recycling center. So, uh, we had a lot of internal discussions on, do we just eat the cost and deal with it, or can we find a better way of, of handling that? And, um, uh, former city manager Thad Taylor reached out to MCC, because MCC has, I think, seven different school sites where they bring one of their trailers, the school collects cardboard, and PCA pays them for that, uh, material above what the market value is. It's kind of their charity back to the school systems. It's not available to the city, we tried to get them to put a trailer for us, for us to, to do, and that's just not available. So we explored partnering with the, with MCC, because they make money on that cardboard collection, and you saw them for years going down River Street and taking every piece that they could, because they fund school programs with that. So they were willing to partner with the city, we relocated our recycling co-mingled bin down to that area, uh, behind the school, and then they took on the rest of the paper and the cardboard from the community. Obviously, that's not working out well, because they can't find the volunteer staff to, uh, fill those trailers properly, the public's not cooperating, because they're not putting the material in the trailer, they're leaving it on the site, um, as opposed to taking it back till it's available. Um, they tried to get another trailer to help make those turns more, uh, effective, but I know they're struggling with it. So, um, the other option is for us to take it back, and to, to again relocate the recycling that the, that's just for city residents, and we can do the, the cardboard on the side. I think we ended up with six dumpsters when we, uh, changed it, but we'll have to absorb the cost for that. Another option, um, that in the eight years I've worked with the city, we've brought before council twice, is to do mandatory, a mandatory curbside recycling. Um, previous councils have looked at that and said, that's a, a cost that goes on every resident, we don't really want to do that to our fixed-income residents, and so it's chosen not to do that. Um, previously, we had a voluntary curbside pickup, and you could pay, I don't remember what the rate was, sixteen bucks, twelve bucks?
It was even less than that.
It was like seven-something a month, yeah.
Eight bucks a month. There were only ninety-eight people in the city that were willing to pay eight dollars a month to have their recycle pickup picked up at their house, and after a number of years, the last, uh, contract renewal with Republic, uh, Republic said, with the low number of participants in the community, we can't send a truck to, to Manistee and drive all through the community to pick up ninety-eight sites, so we took, they took that out of our contract as an option.
Okay.
Can I, can I jump in, cause I have to...
Yeah, yeah.
One of the things is, and again, I, I know how difficult it is, and I know how the, some of the challenges for MCC, but I think the frustration is the communication. It's, and, and I actually watched it yesterday, where, where people come with their, their paper, and they find that the, the truck is closed because it's full. And if we could communicate that through our website, and just be, and just have MCC just call and say, hey, the truck is full, so we can put a notice out on our website, so that people are loading up their car, cause those are the ones, watch somebody do it, actually, I have their, their license plate number, but I'm not gonna turn them in, but, but it was, you know, it was surprising to say, well, you know, they came, and by God, the trailer was locked because it was full, they just threw the stuff out in the parking lot and drove away. And the parking lot today was an absolute mess. I, I ended up helping them try to get the stuff into the truck. So they did get a truck to replace it and open, but, like I said, it's, it's those in-between times when, when the truck isn't there, or when the truck is full, that they end up trashing the place. If we could just figure out some...
Why did they do where the second trailer? It used to be that when it was full, that they opened the second one, and we didn't...
They got to, and that's what happened, but what was happened is, the one went away to, to be emptied, and the other one filled up within minutes. Yeah, before they could get the, get the...
I haven't seen two up there in a while, I, I thought...
The thing is, the two were there because one company, not PCA, offered to let them use it for a while, and that's why two were there, they took that away.
Okay, cause it used to be they'd haul, wanna leave an empty one, haul it away, and there would be a second one, and...
I talked to PCA the other day, cause I called myself when it was locked and people were leaving junk, and they said they have a trailer come every Tuesday and Thursday, or, or Monday and Friday, and they said they come. The problem is, the trailers aren't being packed right. They don't get in there, if you ever go up there, and I've been there, where everything's coming down to the door, or they'll pack it up at the door, and there's nothing in the back of the trailer. So the gentleman at PCA says, it takes his men eight hours to unload that thing, because it's not on pallets, it's not bundled, and so he says he can get somebody in from another company that's all bundled, he's out in, in, uh, two hours, three hours, but with the PC, or MCC thing, it takes hours, because nothing's fixed up, so that he can just get in with a front-end loader and haul it out. So it's poor, they have to have somebody go in there and have the kids take that way back.
And that's what they were doing today.
Yeah. So, they did bring a trailer in the other day when I called Lynn, and she got ahold of somebody, and, but that's, Chudorsky's come in and hauled that out for them.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I, quite frankly, I think they've bitten off more than they can chew. I think that the, the stream of cardboard has increased with all the online ordering, and, um, and I think we have to figure out something else.
Well, is, is it possible for us to get just a couple more of the paper bins and place them at their site? And then that way, if MCC wants to empty the bin and put it in the truck, fine, if not, then Republic hauls it off.
Because PCA...
I mean, that would help, right? I mean, you, if, and you wouldn't have to get six or eight, you know, again, it's...
I'm sure you would.
Yeah, you would.
And then are we, are we paying for, we're paying for more than just city residents at that point, too? We're paying for people...
Correct, that, that's, that cardboard site is not specific to city residents.
Right, so...
The co-mingled is. So I, I think if we're gonna make that kind of a, uh, if we're gonna put out our own dumpsters, cause we did it there for a while, until they could get caught up with it, and, um, and so, you know, the rush, refuse fund absorbed the cost of that, but I think if we're gonna start putting up dumpsters, we're, we're gonna need to be committed all the way, and we're gonna have to start out with eight and add as we see that that capacity, um, is getting used up. Um, because the other thing is, our recycling program is a residential recycling program, and there, it's coming in from outside the city, but it's coming from all the businesses as well, and, um, the, the volume for them is just too great.
I was gonna say, we didn't have eight before.
We had six.
Six, yeah.
We can't just do a dumpster just for, like, businesses on River Street, we can't just have somewhere for them to...
We could if we created a site for that.
Okay.
But Jeff, we should tell people, too, though, that they have the trailer behind MHS, and nobody uses it. I was in there the other day, and it was almost empty.
We, we actually reached out to the school as well, and they, they were not interested, um, when MCC was, because they didn't feel they could have a, um, a steady and reliable volunteer group to...
PCA's got a trailer up there.
Yep, they do.
And the other, the other suggestion, real quick, on the, on the recycling of glass, when, when I lived in Europe, we had the same problem, the Germans are very good about recycling, but a lot of our American products, they, they don't want to recycle it, it's, you know, it's mixed, it's glass and plastic. So what we did was, we bought a crushing machine, and literally, it didn't matter, you put it, put it, the glass in the machine, and it turned it into sand, and I mean, you could literally dial it down, so the sand was so fine, it was like powder. Uh, and, and then we used it on roads, we used it for fill, and that was it, that's how we, we were able to not have that issue in our military bases. And I don't think they were outrageously expensive, um, but we did have our own recycling center as well, so I mean, we had a place to do it, but it wasn't outrageously expensive, and it didn't, it was a product that they used, so, colorful.
Well, I would suggest this is a good topic for a future work session, and if council's interested in doing that, we would just need a little time to refresh, um, numbers with Republic on what it would take to do a mandatory curbside, um, what it would take to start up our own site again, and then look at the numbers on how, um, how those numbers would push back to the residents.
And maybe in the, in the meantime, if you could just, you know, post something on saying, you know, the paper container full, don't load up your car.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can let them know that we, they can use our information portal, uh, but honestly, we don't have control over that information.
Sure, yep, no.
Yeah, I mean, Kelly's more than happy to post that, assuming somebody lets us know or somebody sees it, so...
So a future work session, Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Probably sooner than later?
I think it would be good to dovetail it with the next budgeting process, so we can make sure that those rates will come up, so it'll be probably in the fall sometime.
Okay.
I got one more thing.
One more thing?
Sorry. This for, uh, Josh, um, the blight updates, can we make it so like, the, the blight that wasn't resolved in, like, May, like, if we go back and make sure that it's taken care of? Just because it says it's, like, in resolution, in resolution, it's not, to make sure that it's fully taken.
So what do you want to, what would you like to see on the report?
Just on the next report, that, you know, everything that was on the previous report has been taken care of.
Okay.
And, so it doesn't get missed, and then, I have a question, there's that house on Monroe that was blighted for the yard, and then it caught on fire, so where are they at?
We're working with the property owner and the insurance company. We have Chief Cameron at morning escrow to get it torn down, but we're working with the property owner, uh, to see what his plans are, if he's gonna tear it down or remodel it, or what his plans are.
We don't have to pay for that, though, right?
The insurance company provides us with money for demolition.
Okay.
But we first need to establish with him, does he plan on remodeling, is it salvageable, or is it gonna be demolition? The blight officer assigned to that area is, uh, is motivating him to, to come to an answer.
But can, does he still have to, like, is he still responsible for cleaning up all the cars and stuff?
He's essentially responsible for everything, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I just didn't know if the yard and everything that was gonna sit there along with the house.
My hope is if, if the house gets tore down, everything goes with it.
Okay.
My hope, and we're trying to get to that, that point.
Okay. That's it, that's all I got. I'm done, I'm done.
I like the report that the guys put out, with, that the, each district, and how they let us know what happened with all the junk. That was good.
Martin Pugnian?
Just get those two.
What?
Okay. Um, since you're up here, um, what's going on with the house on Twelfth Street? It was, um, supposed to be torn down?
We've got some, some setbacks, we're working through the setbacks, I think today we found a solution. There was a cost associated with disconnecting the gas and the power, and because it's not a city-owned property, the property owner had to have a, long story short, we're working with those issues, we're, we got a path forward, right now we're on timeframe three to four weeks. So we've got some setbacks, but it's gonna get done some.
Okay, I heard that it was, the reasons why was because there was a bunch of cats living there, too?
That, that issue was resolved before we even scheduled the demolition, yeah, we worked with, uh, I believe the Humane Society to get the cats out.
Okay.
So, the issue was with disconnecting utilities and not being owned by the city, there's a, a few obstacles that we were able to overcome, so, we're moving forward.
All right, thank you. Um, and then, um, I was gonna ask this to Mark, but he already left. Um, I know social districts started Saturday, was there any, um, updates, anybody, any concerns?
We didn't get any, I didn't get any feedback from the officers, we were kind of focused on people in town, uh, I didn't get feedback, positive or negative, so, um, I can ask the officers to see, but usually, if, we're pretty well involved, if we hear something, get feedback, but I haven't heard either way.
Okay, I was kind of interested to see how it went with the, the stores and restaurants, but, so, Mark can give us an update, that'd be good, or, um, the DDA.
And Mark reported at the staff meeting this morning that, you know, it seemed to be well-received, but, um, to give it a little bit of time to kind of see after the fourth dies down and stuff, but as Josh said, there were no problems, but I can have him update, um, once we get a little bit more track record.
Okay.
For the law enforcement side, we didn't get any calls of disorderly or anything associated with that, so, a little bit of an answer for you.
Um, and then, for Jeff, was the vehicle auction ever rescheduled?
Uh, we're looking at the end of July right now, um, we haven't got that firmed up with the auction area yet, but, um, his personal issues are resolved, and so we're trying to schedule that, give us some time, and try to, so, we'll get, get that information through soon.
Okay. Um, and then the issues with Safe Built, um, is, when is their contract up?
I'd have to look, I don't know off the top of my head, when, when it expires and what the termination provisions are.
Okay, cause that is a concern of mine, not only for Steve, but also for everything that's been going on with that, um, I think we should really consider, um, not renewing that contract, so, um, and then I also want to commend the, um, fire department, there was an issue at Next Gen, um, the fire alarm went off, and they responded very quickly, so I appreciate that.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's it.
Mr. Gubowski?
Uh, I agree with council people that criticize Safe Built, because I've asked for reports, and I can't seem to get them either, so I think it's time we do something.
Mayor Zelensky, I thought of one more question I'd like to ask city staff, if that's all right. Um, July first was the deadline of, uh, on our extension on the licenses for the marijuana district? Did, did any of them expire, and did anybody come forward to reapply? Or how was that handled?
We had one license expire, and I'm currently, um, we're currently in the process of, of reviewing two applications that came forward for that license. Um, I had one that was, um, and I guess they were both submitted on July second, um, and so I have twenty-one days to review and then make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Roten?
Everyone asked all the good questions, so, uh, the only thing is, the new ambulance come.
It's still scheduled to be, uh, leaving, you know, New Jersey on the fifteenth of July, we should see it in Detroit area on the seventeenth, I think, seventh, twentieth. Um, they'll have approximately, they'll be installing a cop system and loading system, then we'll receive it, we'll get some graphics put on it, radio install on, expecting to be around the first week of August, and we're looking at having, uh, pushing ceremony be...
Okay. Thank you.